I'd like to call this meeting to order. I guess there's no one here, but please turn off your cell phones if you would. Claire, would you read your compliance?
In accordance with the South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, Section 30-4-ADD, as amended notification of the meeting and the meeting agenda were posted at least 24 hours prior to the meeting in the county council building, at a publicly accessible place on the county website, and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting notification.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I will do the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Raul, in the name of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our time together to make decisions on the benefit of Jasper County. Father, we pray for these next few days of extreme heat that you place your hand of protection upon us. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Any discussion on the approval of the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda or modify it?
I got it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? Hearing none, all those in favor raise their right hand and but aye.
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 Mr. Andy, you're up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Impact fees is the subject I'm going to just go over briefly with you. Mr. Carson Weiss was the consultant we hired to craft the impact fee study. It's a countywide impact fee study. Mr. Weiss is not able to be with us today. He was intending to and tried to. His plane was delayed last night due to weather. He's traveling from Maryland. However, I do understand from a recent email that he'll be here later this afternoon. He's going to be doing some impact fee work with Paul George, I think, this afternoon. So I have to reschedule his visit with you. I think it's important that you have some face-to-face time with him and not just have a virtual meeting with him. And maybe this is a blessing in disguise that you have a chance to review the study a little bit prior to him coming back to see you. Just a brief background on how we got started with impact fee discussion. You'll hear impact fees used inappropriately or incorrectly in some of the developments that we do, Hardyville does, the town of Ridge one. Currently, they all are, all jurisdictions are exacting voluntary developer fees, all right, from developers. But we don't have formal impact fees according to the state statute. And so that's what this effort was. It was to try to look at impact fees that would be formalized countywide. And we started that effort back really in 2019. And that's when Beaufort County was re-looking at their impact fees, trying to redo them. And of course, they have used Mr. Weiss for their study. So we moved forward with hiring Mr. Weiss in December of 2020. And so began work shortly thereafter in the new year 2021. It involved a lot of meetings with the municipalities and the staff to figure out where we were budgetarily, what projects were on the horizon, those kinds of things. And since it's dated, that work will have to be redone. But all the templates are there and all the, pretty much, most of the same people are still around and most of the projects are the same. So it shouldn't be too terribly painful. An added benefit that came out of the exercise was specifically with regard to transportation. We had a lot of detailed work done on transportation projects. And if you'll notice the list in the presentation, that was really the beginning. And it was a two-year process before it concluded. Working with the municipalities to agree on the road projects that ultimately became the projects in the transportation sales tax effort. So that took care of a lot of problems for us in that we were all lock, steady, and in agreement when that went to the ballot, which is a big thing. So there are a number of requirements by the state statute on how impact fees need to be developed and adopted. And this work initially will start with the council. If the council wants to move forward with it, it really will ultimately be blessed by the planning commissions. They're functioned to do that and then come back to you. But that's the sum and summary of it. These fees were based on the projects at the time. They are countywide. When we say countywide, we can probably have some discussion about that, too. They are only collectible within the municipalities if the municipalities agree to do that. And our current status is that that'd be very, very tricky to do in the city of Hardyville since there are so many existing development agreements that preclude some of these fees. I'm not sure how we could administratively do that. The town of Ridge is a little easier. However, I did hear recently that the town is also looking at trying to do some formal impact fees, perhaps doing a study through Raftellis, the other group we talked about, to look at those. So it is a topic of discussion for many jurisdictions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this going forward, knowing that full well we'll have another bite at the apple when we can get Mr. Weiss down here to review it in detail for you and knowing that it'll have to be redone numbers-wise based on its age.
It's been even. I don't have any questions. I think we should wait until he's here. Mr. Orizela?
Eddie, what triggers these impact fees? The building of a house, the building of a pool?
It's really any structure. There are dwelling units in there, dwelling units, residential dwelling units, commercial.
And what kind of percentage of, I'm guessing it's a percentage of the project or?
I can't answer the formulaic stuff that he does, but he's done throughout the country. And there's a methodology for doing that. I don't know that it's real simple to be able to tell you.
But no idea, no, how much it would drive at the price of these projects?
Yes, sir. You can see on the, there are specific examples of residential and non-residential, what they would be. Go to the presentation. This was, this was then, this is not now. And I'll tell you, I'll cut to the chase. This is typically how the studies go. The study is put together with data and it comes back and tells you what they should be. And then you, as the policymakers, have to decide what's your political appetite with those things? They rarely are adopted at 100%. Try to find the one slide. I think that summarizes this.
Do you have this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a...
Is page 10 might be on?
I don't know if there's a summary slide or not. I was concerned, I had been focused specifically on slide number 25, which is the road work. That's what we spent most of our time on. He has them broken down by the different functions and you have to add all of those up.
And the efficient use for these funds are road projects, you said, or?
No, they're all the different functions that are listed in the report in the front, the different services. There are certain services that are eligible by state statute and there are certain services that were chosen by the former council. Law enforcement was not. That is another big one that you could look at. They, once collected, have to be spent within three years. If you'll look at page seven, it talks about the allowable categories where you could develop and charge impact fees. Water, wastewater, transportation, solid waste, stormwater, public safety, police, fire, EMS, parks, recreation, libraries, and schools. I'll tell you, this was done in conjunction with the local school district to pay for their portion of it. They also had a separate section of it. We do not have that included here.
Lisa, wastewater is already charged impact fees, right?
Right, right. I think that's intended for a jurisdiction that provides those services. We wouldn't be doing that. And the other tricky thing is it has to be a growth-related thing. It can't just be you want a new fire station or you want to do this or hey, we've always been waiting to get this money to do this. You have to show a reasonable nexus of why that's required by the actual growth that's coming. So his study goes back and looks at all the development units and where they are. And that plays into what the fees are.
That's, that's like PDD. You can't charge anything unless it directly relates to the...
It's supposed to be on the impact, yes, sir.
So you couldn't put a, you couldn't put an impact fee in and to do something in Graves since there was no impact there.
That's right. And that's a, that's a great way to describe it, I think, is that this is sort of like one huge PDD for your county. You're putting all together, knowing the growth that's coming. And this money can only support infrastructure associated with that, with new growth.
And with water, that would, would that, that would, we wouldn't be concerned with that? Would that be part of the group to go to Beaufort County Water?
I don't know about collecting on behalf of another air station. Mr. Teddy, you have any advice on that?
The Water Authority is kind of a specialized entity. It's a special purpose district or set up by the state. It has its own abilities to do funds and we're kind of out of it. They have so many different ways that they collect money for their capital improvement. So they, we stayed with it historically, back in the day, in the early 2000s, late 90s, when we were looking at this. We were working with Jasper County and I was with Hardyville. We looked at impact fees back then because Beaufort County was doing that. But we looked at the development agreement being a little bit more flexible at that time because what caught eventually several counties across the state was that spending the money within three years of its scheduled point in time to be spent. Harding County, I think Dorchester, maybe even Charleston had to refund money because they didn't keep their plans up to speed. You don't have that same restriction in the development agreement fees that you can charge. But the ones that traditionally have been focused on have been roads, stormwater, which is associated with roads by often, parks and recreation, libraries and fire.
Can we go back, can we go back that slide if you wouldn't mind? I'm, what I'm trying to do is cut out the thing, since we're not going to really go into depth, is cut out what we don't, don't consider funding. Meaning, it's not going to be wastewater because we don't do that. We don't do water. Transportation?
Beaufort County does both sales tax and transportation impact fees. And they break their fee in transportation down into two areas, two service groups, Southern Beaufort County and Northern Beaufort County. Because you can, you can have different subsectors.
And you could have projects that are impact fee eligible that are not, that, I'm sorry, the other way around. That the transportation sales tax approved that are not impact fee eligible. So, Mr. Kemp, I have a suggestion here. I think I'll peel these out. It's slide 15, 18, 21, and 25.
15.
15, 18, 21, and 25 are specifically the draft amounts, Mr. Orizela, that you had requested. You have to add those up. But it lists a proposed fee for single-family and multifamily dwellings for residential and non-residential for each of those items. For instance, in slide number 15, the proposed fees for partial recreation, single-family, $1,405. Multifamily, $1,270.
What is the persons per household, housing unit? Two, I'll take 2.41. Excuse me. Aye. Wasn't dollars was a unit.
Right. And that's based on another pre-study that's not this presentation that he had to do to be compliant with the statute, which looks at your demographics and all those kind of things.
The difference between a development agreement fee and an impact fee is development agreement fees don't have to be as scientifically mathematically precise as this statutory impact fee because it's built in. You've got to have all the background data and numeric backup to support it.
So if I'm not mistaken, excuse me, do you have anything to say?
Yeah. No, I got some.
Okay.
Let me go on.
Okay. So with the impact fees, I think we're many, many years late to the table with this. This is something that should have been talked about many, many years ago when you've got the southern end and the incorporated areas of Ridge one, both mostly function under PDDs and development agreements. I know they're looking at different things there with some of their fees. We keep talking about affordable, attainable, and all these other things. Then you stick another fee on top of that. An infill lot in the middle of the country doesn't do, it's not an impact per se. It's like a planned development neighborhood. So when you look at it from those perspectives, and I know there's credits and other things that can, can go down those pathways to kind of assist with it. This is, to keep up with the state statute, you have to spend that money within three years. How are we going to manage that in areas that the minimal impact in that particular area may not be per whatever the unit that is developing? So there's a lot of this. It, it sounds good in certain aspects, but it sounds bad in others. And then you, everybody else is going to want to jump on board. School district is going to want to try to jump on and get their impact fees to this. And kind of the way that things are going right now with everything, I mean, eventually we're going to have to tell people to kick rocks because it's, we, we need to make sure that we're doing everything good for the taxpayer. And I just don't, I understand the concept and I'm a supporter of impact fees. But again, we're many, many years late to the table on this. And again, unless the municipalities come on and there was an agreement with their, really and truly the infill and a little bit of building, we may have some of that 172, 78 corridor down in the southern end of the county that's still unincorporated Jasper. But for the most, I just don't see where we're going from there because most of these places are going to come in. And we talk about growth boundaries and growth rings and things. Our biggest thing is we don't have infrastructure, water sewer ideally. So until those things come, we're, this is essentially, we're, we're talking about something that, that is there that I just don't know. Like, I just don't think we'll be able to execute it within three years. And again, the, the biggest things are the growth in your municipalities. I mean, unincorporated Jasper is primarily going to stay rural for the next 20, 25 years, I would, I would think. But the, the key thing is, is the infrastructure getting there. The developers need to pay for the infrastructure to get to their places they want to develop. I understand impact fees is kind of one of those components that kind of meets you in the middle to get you there. But I just, again, I think this is 25 years too late to kind of start. Now, it's, it's a, that's just my opinion. It's a topic for, as we go into the future. But if we're looking at rural Jasper County being rural, I, I think that imposing some of these fees and how these things do doesn't go with the attainable, affordable things that we're wanting to push. One initiative and push another, like I said, it just, it don't make sense.
Okay.
I'm finished.
Okay. Just, and I'm not saying any, I'm just trying to understand this. When you say that, let's say, for example, let's use Fire District. We have a Fire District. We could incorporate that to have in one of the Fire District, a impact fee, but another Fire District who don't need it, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is, this is countywide impact fees for those services. If you're talking about separate villages for fire, we're going to get into that.
No, no, no. I was trying to say is, let's say we have an impact fee for the Graves area.
Right.
I shouldn't have confused, but the Graves area. We don't, we can use an impact fee right there, but we don't have to use, we don't have to impose it someplace else. That's what I was trying to say.
Well, the way this was drafted, and we suspected it'd be the same pretty much as Beaufort County did, that you'd have a different dynamic with the cost of growth in the southern end of the county versus the north. So the way this was done, it's not totally broken out here, but that was done for this exercise and also for choosing the road projects for the transportation sales tax is that we had basically a, a southern and a northern fee and they were different. Yes, sir. Now, I've added those fees up and give you the sticker shot. Parks and Rec was $1,405. Excuse me, firefighting alone was $1,495. EMS was $334. And because there was no other funding whatsoever, we tried to, I think funded at a 60% level of the road wish list at that time. That was $19,960. Ended up being a little over $23,000, pretty much.
And 20, 23,000 total for the overall impact.
Yes, sir.
So again, we, we live in a county that's kind of south of the back shawl as one socioeconomic class. And then north of you is, the ratios are different just because of the growth on the southern end. $20-something thousand impact fees for an infill, single block person wanting to build their home, that's a, that's a big deal on top of your building permit fees, your zoning fees. You're probably, before you even swing a hammer and turn dirt, you're $30,000, $35,000 into impact and you haven't done anything yet. And again, whenever we're looking at talking about affordable, attainable workforce, whatever the catchphrase is we use this week, that's just another thing. And how do we quantify to that? One dwelling brings that much impact versus a planned neighborhood? That's the, that's kind of where I'm getting at. I understand the concept with, when you build a planned neighborhood because of the services and things that transpires from it. But like I said, it's, when you're, we're going to spend that much money before you, you even do that, that takes a lot of these folks that want to do their own things out of, out of commission.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one other thought. Again, the road fee in there was high because there was no other funding. We were trying to figure out how that would work. That was pre-transportation sales tax. The general discussion was back and forth about what would be a palatable road fee politically. And we had the, I think we grabbed at the $5,000 mark, which was kind of similar to what we were dealing with the voluntary fees at the time. So if you added those in, it'd be about 800, I'm sorry, $8,234 per dwelling unit that would be charged.
Will you say that one more time?
$8,234.
Philosophically, in the 35 years I've been doing this, when impact fees came on, it was because we realized, we, governments realized, that the feds were not going to be funding traffic like they used to. And the state was pretty stingy with its money, too. And there were impacts in our area of some cities and things like that that had to be dealt with. But the cost of road building has exponentially gone up in the last 10 years, 20 years. And some of those fees were lagging behind. What development agreement fees miss are projects that are not 500, 250,000, multi-thousand acre parcels because they don't have development agreements. So the impact fees pick up those infill of other smaller developments. But the development agreement fees usually have an exemption or a credit for what's paid out of that against the impact fees if you can collect it. Most of the development agreements had 20 to 30-year terms when they were put into place in 2000s or late 90s. So they're timing out now. So there's to the point Mr. Raul was making about when is rural Jasper County and other areas going to start coming on and when is the opportunity going to be there? It's coming in the, you know, the next decade to be pre-planning ahead out there.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we did want to say, obviously, the commercial industrial is, is the larger moneymakers for the county. And Mr. Tedder said this is not, none of these funds were designed, as Mr. Weiss can explain to you, to fully fund any projects. It was to provide some seed money or continuous money to move forward. And again, I'll remind you, two quick things. There is a provision in there for affordable housing. You can deal with that as a commonest norm or that you, that you can. Number two, again, remind you, this only applies to new residents and not existing residents. So that's, those are the two things that I'll, I'll be quiet about after answering the questions that you have.
One point about the three years, it's three years of when it's scheduled to be expended. So you can have a 10-year building window and you don't have to spend the money all upfront within the first three years. It's got to be planned in the, in the underlying document of when the project is going to come online. The problem was, everyone thought we were going to build, some counties thought they were going to be building a lot faster than they were. And then they changed the program around and didn't modify their plan and got caught because of the lack of due diligence, I think, the infrastructure schedule.
Lisa, can you tell me just off, off the top of your head, how many permits we have to a year? Just the, I mean, is it 100, 200?
It's less than 100.
Less than 100. Less than a hundred.
Well, you add, well, almost-
Yeah, that is single-family residential stick-built. We permit more mobile homes than we do houses. Um, not too long ago, we did permit just over a hundred homes one year, like a hundred and three or a hundred and four. Just off the top of my head, I'm gonna say maybe seventy homes, uh, stick-built homes, probably a hundred mobile homes.
Would that be, now, would that be an impact fee on a mobile?
Yes, sir.
We're doing pretty decent with commercial, uh, structures.
So if you did a hundred in a year, that'd be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, just off the figures, right, that we would get?
Yes.
That's not even a, not even a mill, correct? Is that, I'm, it's not even, oh, I'm just saying that.
Well, it's still ten percent of that mobile home. If you, if you buy a single-wide, you pay eight to five thousand and you say in eight thousand two hundred and thirty-four, and I don't know what it would be on a mobile home. Whatever it is, it's, it's a huge tax increase. Um, do have a question. After three years, what happens to that money that's not spent? Where does it go?
Goes back, you have to get back to payer.
To the payer, okay.
In a multifamily, and let's, let's just call multifamily apartment complex. That is, just looking at this total right here, fifteen, two seventy-six, that's per door or per unit. Like if you have a hundred apartments, you multiply that down by a hundred apartment units.
If a unit?
Yeah, I mean, they, they do, they do a calculation. Or Carson Weiss has done a calculation of how many folks per door they expect to have on average. And so the fee is based on that equivalent unit of how many folks are going to be, uh, using the services of the county.
I hate to ask this, but maybe the, what is the affordable housing component?
Um, you design it, um, I can't recall off the top of my head. There's a statutory limit on how much you can get, but I think it's typically, I've seen thirty-five percent. Uh, it could be greater depending on what you're doing in there, uh, based on the type of affordability that you're working for. You know, uh, low, medium, uh, income, you see, that's-
Yeah, he has a-
He has a slide in there, I think about- This is not an easy subject. Uh, all counties throughout the state are struggling with all the different components.
Okay, since I've been on this council, nothing's been easy.
Yeah, it, it says that credits can be done. I think you have to develop your own program with that.
Mr. Engiezen?
All right, so I apologize as I was texting back and forth with my office when we were starting this out. Um, so is this done on percent of construction cost?
Uh, no, it's, it's done based on the number of, uh, the house, the residential equivalent unit.
Right, so, you know, a million-dollar house is the same as a mobile home.
It's based on certain-
Jasper County permitting-wise is more expensive than Beaufort County hands down already, you know? It's crazy.
Mr. Chairman, if I get, Gray, do you, you work in Beaufort County, do you have any idea what those impact fees are for a unit?
I don't, cause it just went up, I know they did on Hillhead.
I'll, I'll check. I don't either, I apologize.
They checked them, I'm, they have modified them at least twice in the last ten years, if I recall correctly. Most, you know, they, they look at it, besides inflation, they're looking-
It just doesn't seem right though to pay the same impact fee. I don't know, somebody pulled a million-dollar home and somebody buys an eighty-five thousand dollar, you know, mobile home. They're paying, both paying the same fee. I mean, they're getting the same, they're getting the usage of the utilities, I get that, but it just is, I mean, it's hard to swallow.
It's the same road, you know, it's the same-
I, I get that.
Cars on the road, need for the firefighter, need for the ambulance, need for-
Why do we have to have taxes? Why can't stuff just be free? Wouldn't that be great?
But what is- The roads that we have in the county are state roads. We, I mean, we have our county roads, but we also have a per-car annual fee that people are paying. Um, and then maybe I'll have some questions about that, not today. But, but with that being said, we're doing that, um, and, and like the, the likelihood, like I said, we got state roads. As it pertains to parks and rec, and you see this and there, they're getting near about as much as fire rescue, um, on there. Why is the number higher for recreational services or?
Yeah, Mr. Ralph, I can't explain that until we go back and figure out, try to remember what those projects were and the methodology that Mr. Weiss used. I really can't speak to it.
Um, what numbers is he going off of? Is it countywide to include the municipalities? Are we looking at unincorporated Jasper to pull these numbers? And, and what is the, the overall goal?
Well, remember, impact fees are designed to compensate for future growth.
Correct.
But you have to know what your baseline is right now. You have to know what your residual capacity on roads or fire are. And then it goes back to the Clemson study we did in the early two thousands. You look at, at how many new households do you need a fire station? Or a new police car, or a new ambulance, or more administrative staff for those things? And, and when are your roads gonna start failing? So he, they create a very complex model to look at that and then determine what is gonna be needed at what point? And how much of that new growth is gonna be available for that? The problem that we have is, I was gonna say, our state doesn't expand roads fast enough. And I, um, we look at the triangle, which is what, last year we went in with a multi-jurisdictional effort to try and do the triangle, what was it, three hundred and fifty million dollars? And the state said, that's on y'all. And it's all state roads that are being improved. Uh, so that's our transportation sales taxes having to try and step up and do what they can there.
Mr. Ralph, I can answer your question. It was done countywide, uh, growth countywide, but specifically the cost to county services specifically with that growth.
Okay.
The money generated here will go into the same coffers, fire, parks. And those things are also funded by taxpayer money directly. Why the, why the whole methodology of doing it? When you're having to guess what it's gonna cost you next year, the year after, you don't have to do that because why not just raise the taxes at the end of the year? Cause then you know.
Well, Mr. Rizzoli, the, the big thing that impact fees get at is the fact that when something is built in South Carolina, you don't get the money for at least a good full year, right? Somebody buys a lot in a subdivision, um, you'll only get the, the taxes on the lot the first year after the house is built. You gotta go a whole year of servicing of that. You have to hire new people, you have to do all that without those funds. So this sort of frontloads that. Uh, that's what the impact is all about.
Yes, but, you know, such is life, but, um, for the rest of the years that that thing is standing, you will pay taxes. It just seems like, it just seems like the expense of-
I can agree to, to argue it that way too. I'm just telling you that, uh, if, if you're a new person coming here from out of state, this is not a big deal. If you are a local person and you have a son or a daughter and they wanna put a mobile home up, it could be a big deal. But it's everybody being fed from the same spoon.
And most of those folks that are coming here from out of state, they're moving to a planned subdivision. You've got a few that'll buy a rural parcel, build a house, do their thing. And, um, again, it's just, this is a, a big conversation. Again, I don't disagree with impact fees. I just think we're twenty-five years too late to the table with this because, um, if it was a little bit more palatable, uh, because again, you're throwing that fee on top of other zoning fees, all the, everybody's got their hand out for a fee associated. And I know there's a cost to doing business, I definitely get that. But, but again, by the time Ms. Smith wants to build a house in downtown Grays, it's gonna cost thirty-five thousand dollars before you swing a hammer. And that's where I've got a big issue with it because you take the affordability, capability, all the things.
Well, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, council's pleasure, I can have a discussion with Mr. Weiss, explain where we are. I think we probably need to get a proposal from him to adjust it with your input, uh, so that we can address all those things and then see where we stand. I'd like you to have accurate numbers in front of you before you make a decision.
You know, it's, is there a way, can you limit impact fee, meaning a single house doesn't get it, but a multiple development gets it? And that would be a PDD, I guess. Oh, there's a small PDD and there's no PDD, right? You three or four houses, you put three or four houses in.
I think you, can you legally do commercial industrial versus residential or, or there?
I believe you have to do it all, but I'm not certain.
What, yeah, bottom line is you gotta have a rational basis for any category that you create, rational basis. The southern Beaufort has a different traffic need than northern Beaufort, so you create a rational basis there. Affordable housing creates a rational base for you trying to create a credit for those types of things. But when you look at your classification, what they call the equal protection argument out there, you've got to be a little bit careful about why you're exempting something that, that otherwise would be in there just on your size alone.
And you may wanna take transportation out now that you have this transportation sales tax, which would be a huge reduction in this. Uh, you may want to add law enforcement. You have to pick, pick what you want him to take a look at. And I'll bring him back down here and discuss and see if he can ask the right questions to see if he can move forward to help you out.
And just one more little question. Nothing's little, I'll tell you. Is, you know, in the RP ten, they had it where if somebody was here for thirty years, they were exempted or whatever they were doing. Could that be here in the impact fee? Because what's, what we're doing, what we're doing now is, if you do an impact fee, right? People that are here are not creating more traffic, they are already here. Whereas somebody moving in from outside, out of state, the argument-
The argument would be they are living in my house, now they're creating another house, right? So they are creating another set of trips, they are creating-
Creating additional population.
Additional populations, yes.
But they're also paying additional taxes.
Right.
Everything that you pay-
Well, the problem is the taxes aren't sufficient to pay the impact. Let's see what, what it is.
Could be that, but I'd have to be very sure that we are so tight, that everybody's budget is so tight, before I would consider something like this. I would wanna make sure that we were spending all of our money and not wasting the dime of it. Because this is saying we're gonna raise taxes, you might call it something else, but it's raising taxes. It's no different. It might be more palatable on the front load, but we're raising taxes here.
Essentially, it's a front loaded tax.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's the problem we have, especially with the PDEs coming out of any place. We, we see this population go up, but it's, how long does it take the additional revenue that we get out of there? Less than five, what, maybe five years before you can actually see that revenue?
But that's growing pains and, and, and so we have to decide how fast we wanna grow. Because if we grow too fast, it's just like a business that just went and exploded and, and then overextended themselves and got themselves in trouble. And that's something we need to talk about too. Here or later or whatever. But we need to decide how fast and how much extension we wanna get, how much we wanna pay for all this infrastructure and wait for everything to catch up. And more chores been done in the past for that, I'm not suggesting that, but we need to, we need to decide that.
And again, uh, when developers come into developing area, they're coming in for a profit versus someone that's building their house, single infill lot somewhere. Again, it's, we as the government shouldn't be, uh, incentivizing developers and then, but, I mean, this kinda helps people have to pay their way, but like if, if they wanna build, it's kinda like build it and they'll come. Like if there's certain things, if you don't have the infrastructure, you can't build it. That's the simplest thing and that's kinda my methodology when we were talking about RP ten growth boundaries and other things like, we've already got our growth boundaries here, it's called no infrastructure. So again-
I think, I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead, sorry.
But with these right here, again, like I said, I, I fully support impact fees that are reasonable. Um, and again, the, a two billion dollar house versus a hundred thousand dollar house pays the same way. And I, I know it's based on impact, it's, that's just not palatable. Um, when most of the folks that I represent in my area are at that less than median household income and some are even further below that, we just need to, to make sure that we're doing good by all of them and not just the folks that are moving in that are, that have surplus they're trying to, uh, pay for to avoid capital gains from when they sell their house up somewhere else.
Mr. Chairman, I think Vice Chairman makes a good point that perhaps throughout this exercise, you will have a better sense of what you may want to charge with a PDD, uh, which we've kinda been all over the place as well. And to Mr. Ralph's point, um, you know, make sure that the, if there's a PDD that they pay, um, versus the, the current residents.
I, that's what I was gonna just say, I think that impact fee for everybody is kind of unfair because some of the people that have been here for years really haven't created any of this traffic as to the developments that we do it. Unfortunately, most of the developments are in Hardyville or Bridgeland. So the benefit we get is nil almost, correct? I mean, we don't get much, we have, maybe that's another meeting for a joint meeting with Hardyville is, hey, look, you got impact fees, you actually are creating problems with your increase.
Yeah.
And after, after five years, we, the, the question, when I first got here, the, this Hardyville would say, well, you're getting incorrect, in, increase in taxes. Yeah, but how long does it take the increase in taxes to come out to three million dollars? Right? And this is what, this is what an impact fee is, is trying to get ahead of it. But it's, it's an unfair situation, I think, personally.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a, that's a great point that can again come out in a study like this. Whether you choose to move it forward or not is the actual real cost of the impact of the growth, right? It's something you need to talk about because as you said, every time something is developed in a municipality, it affects county services, everything from splitting the lot with our GIS and our assessor's office to, uh, when the person dies, uh, paying for the corner. I mean, and there are just a gamma of county services that are obligated every time a new home is constructed. And I don't think that's always been communicated very well.
And I really think that maybe we should have a joint service, a joint, uh, meeting again and discuss this where they give, for example, Sergeant Jasper Park, you know, people from, don't, from Grays don't talk, go down there, maybe, maybe they don't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, impact fees need to be spread across, I'm not for extra, more taxes or anything like that. But the reason the impact fees have to be that way is because you, you're putting lumber trucks on the road, concrete trucks on the road, they wouldn't be doing that. So they are using more because they're building new, a new structure, you know? So there are cars being put on the road, building that structure purposely.
Yeah.
So that's part of it. Now, my office just texted me and said, the impact fees on Hillhead are ten thousand dollars per new home. So, you know, this being twenty-three, it's like, oof, um, ten thousand's hard to swallow. But, uh, anyway, I just wanna throw that in there. That, my point of view is they're here, you're living here, you've lived here for twenty years, you're building a new house and you're creating more stuff on that road for, for that house, you know? So it does impact, it does have some impact, is my one point.
I was like, well, Mr. Engiezen, somebody's gonna be living in your old house too, so.
Right, exactly.
One, one other point is, we've always had to, and not just us, everybody, always incentivize people to come in. Development, we just always wanted that, that's delightful. But here we are, I think it's a fair statement to say we've probably exceeded the capacity of our roads at this time already. If we haven't, I think we have, you argue. And so I don't think we need to incentivize all this stuff. If somebody wants to come in and they wanna pay the same- And so I don't think we need to incentivize all this stuff. If somebody wants to come in and they want to pay the same as everybody else, fine. If they don't, I'm saying we don't need to be as gracious with these PDDs and development agreements anymore. And that's a way of slowing it down and still remaining strongly in what we bring into our coffers. But giving these huge incentives away at this point is fruitless.
As Sergeant Stillett and Andy came correct, if my memory is failing, but years ago, decades ago, we did get together with all the municipalities and we did studies to determine what costs were. And we initially set the development impact fees in the documents based on a number that came off of that. Decades have gone by and we haven't really had the same amount of communication, kept up with each other. It ought to be the same impact for impact fees generally for basic county services, whether you're in Hardyville, which will have a 100% proportion of county. And there may be some additional in the municipalities because they have a different level of service or type of service that they give there. That's the rational way that you would look at it, that we all, you know, should make a difference whether you live on one side of the road or the other for impact fees, if you're using the same roads, but if you're using different roads, it may. But we did have that discussion that years ago, we spent a year and a half trying to figure out how to make things better. We just calculated by several orders of thousands of dollars per home is usually where we are now, trying to play catch up.
Well, to John's point, this is, while it's huge numbers, the amount of actual permits that would be drawn, that would be paid is minimal. If you were trying to increase your revenue, you could protect the people that are here. If someone wants to come here and is willing to pay that, can't pay that, let them pay that. And if you concentrate on developers and development, as John said, your, your numbers would be way off the chart compared to what we're actually going to get here. But what this is gonna do is make, anyway.
Well, I think it's a good exercise to take, as Mr. Fulcher said, take what the discussion has been today from up there, give it to Carson. You see what our county concerns are. They've got a national base of experience to draw on to say, here's what we've seen, here's what others may have done, here's what you can or cannot do. Maybe you don't get to the right answer, but you will, but at least you'll have had that discussion and a better understanding.
That's the question I was gonna ask, is, is anybody doing any research that's done differently than what we're talking about now?
I think that's why I wanted Carson here, and that'll be your next meeting. You can brainstorm all day along with him, he's a very, very young.
You don't know, you don't know, right?
Don't know.
I still think we have to have a joint meeting, get, get this PDD and get some. It's, it's, I just see it. We, everybody says they want something, but it takes a long time to get that tax up there.
Right. There's, there's, there's no, nothing wrong with the municipality asking for an exaction or a fee from a developer to go toward county service.
Right. Like, for example, courts, the jail, anything like that, that's, you know.
Counties provide a lot of service.
It doesn't seem like it, but the more the population, the more you have in courts, the more you have in the jails, more EMT.
And typically, most of the folks moving here, they're, they're not residents of our jailhouse, but they do, you can see the lines when people are paying their taxes. Eventually, we're gonna have to open up another tax office on the, somewhere else, or a satellite office to be able to do that. Just, we've got things we're gonna have to do, and I get that. So we're definitely gonna have to put our, our heads together with some of our neighbors and maybe a joint meeting in the future sometime, not the next two weeks, but in, in the future would be good to get with all the municipalities. And that, that's where I'd go. Like, right now, I know the, the school is gonna want to sit at the table as well because they're gonna want to do that, but I just, I don't think now's the time for that with everything that's going on in current events. We definitely need to make sure that we're, we're looking at that holistically as well.
Yes, sir. You are, you are in control of that, Brian. You are in control.
I just want to know, I just want to, the thing is, we have a meeting in September, which is in Hardyville. Maybe I, we should invite Hardyville for a joint meeting.
Your meeting is there in Hardyville in September?
And that's, you.
I just know, it just hit me. He asked about the building permit numbers.
Yes.
Just between three communities that are under construction now for site infrastructure, it's 700 units gonna be coming online. Whether that's, takes two years.
I mean, in, in Jasper.
In Jasper County. The CSP development on Highway 278, the build to rent at 10170 near the, near the John Paul Catholic School, the Foxtail Commons, and then the, right down the road on Old Bailey is the Townhouse duplex. So just those three are 700 units. All three of those are under construction now for site infrastructure.
But all of those are, all of those are PDDs with.
Yeah, so it would be.
Well, no, not the townhouse.
Townhouse does not.
That'd be neutral.
Five right.
It's, um, gonna be four, seven years.
That'd be neutral, right?
It's five right, yes.
Because whatever they charge an impact fee, they, they give it back, or we give it back to them.
Well, that, that's what I was talking about earlier. We are very generous from time to time with those developments. And I say, handle it there. If you're looking for money, that's where you go. Stop this other stuff. I mean, we, we, people being up for, if we, if we told everybody, we're talking about going up $23,000, but you won't build your own house on your land.
Well, I think that, I think that re-engaging Mr. Vice in going through this will get you to where you want to be, and you'll have real good data to back it up and not just make it up in numbers. So I think that's, I think it's worth the exercise.
I'd also mention that if this went into effect, it would be a mechanism and it would go up and up and up. And a, and a dollar bill is only 100 pennies, 100%, and everybody's at 50% or better right now. And we just keep looking for you, 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 I mean.
You would be required to revisit it every five years, yes.
You would have to worry about reelection, that's.
Really?
I'm sure you are worried about that, right?
$23,000. What's good is good, you know? Does everybody want to agree with that? Can we go forward?
At least go forward.
Well.
Get the, I think we need to, need to have more discussions, and I think it needs to be moving forward, goes into discussion more with both municipalities and wherever we can host a larger joint kind of meeting. But also, I'd like to see what the, the public at large has to say about this as well. I don't know if we could add a public comment kind of time to that workshop to kind of get feelers out on that, because I'd like to hear their opinions as well.
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts on that, all those are great ideas, but I'm a little hesitant for you to have that strategy to invite everybody in to look at a draft at three years old. I think you need to tidy this up on your own first and then put something out that everybody can, can look at and comment on, that kind of.
And circle back and.
Yes.
Bring that guy first.
Absolutely.
Yeah, me with him, he'll go through these other stuff.
Super quick process, but yeah, we can come back where you feel comfortable about it, so if you know exactly what scope you're getting, then he produces the report to your liking. And then I think you have the opportunity to review because you'll know the full costs of the impact for county services. And then, then perhaps it's a good time to put stuff out to the public when you have some real numbers. These are dated. They were skewed based on the fact that we didn't have any transportation.
Right, and that, that's kind of what my brain was saying, I just, I just didn't get it out. But we definitely need to get the real numbers in front of them because these right here, even me as an elected official, like this is.
Right. I have some comments as well.
Yeah.
Well, to be clear, for me, you stop being so generous with the developers when they come in. Because every time we're generous with them, we have to make up the difference, and where do we get it from? Everybody else. And so if they're coming in, if they can sell it, and they can afford it, and they can afford the impact, let's make them pay for it. Stop being so generous with these PDDs or whatever we're doing, because every time we come up short, then we have to figure out where to get it. And this is, this is the result of it, in my view. I don't.
Yes, sir. I hope you appreciate that this exercise can tell you exactly what that impact is, so that you will know what to assess the development.
Right, and.
You've said that before, I like that.
And again, the, the impacts of the larger developments, the signalization, additional roads, infrastructure, again, I think it's more centralized with the larger developments than infill, just my personal opinion on that.
And, and just as we talked about Raffelis the other day, this is something, we, we started this with Chelsea South. Mr. Vice does fiscal impact analysis for development as well. And, you know, going forward, you're gonna just need to do that with every large scale development you have. You're gonna have to have somebody beat down the numbers and tell you what it's gonna cost you. In the past, we have done our own internal stuff and tried to guess at that, but we have not used a professional. You should do this, and you should probably make the developer pay for it to tell, make them pay to tell you what they should pay.
It gives them a choice. A new person coming in this area has a choice, here, there, Georgia, wherever. The person that owns a lane here that wants to build a house, they have no choice. I mean, they, they just, they're gonna have to do it, or they're just not gonna do it. I like that.
Thank you.
So we finish that.
Okay.
Topic. General Despension of accessory structures.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I need to step out for a couple of minutes. I had a previously scheduled call at 11:00 or something. I'll be back shortly, but I'm not ignoring you. I've got a minute.
No problem.
I'm gonna go ahead and just ask this out. I thought we could just kind of fuck up long.
Thank you. Thank you.
Instead of reading the staff report to you, I just, I put together just some bullet notes here and just basically, the staff report that was provided for you this morning is exactly the same as what was presented at the July 21st, 2025 meeting. And then just a little bit of timeline here. June 2nd, 2025, this proposed ordinance amendment regarding accessory structures was reviewed by the county council and sent back to planning commission to take another look at the proposed ordinance. June 10th, planning commission looked at it and instructed staff to look at other nearby counties to compare standards regulating accessory structures. July 10th, 2025, planning commission reviewed the proposed ordinance amendment for the accessory structures, and they looked at regulations from Beaufort County, Collin County, Orangeburg County, and Berkeley County. So I provided in your package for today those ordinances from, well, actually, the current accessory structural ordinance for Jasper County, Beaufort County, Collin County, Orangeburg County, and Berkeley County. Jasper County uses building placement setbacks and building size limitation to regulate accessory structures. Accessory structures are limited to 800 square feet or 25% of the total ground floor area in the residential zoning district. In the rural preservation zoning district, structures are limited to 1,000 square feet for 1 to 1.9 acres, 1,250 square feet for 2 to 2.9 acres, 1,500 square feet for 3 to 4.9 acres, and 2,000 square feet for 5 acres or more, plus 250 square feet for each additional acre over 5 acres. Beaufort County, they use setbacks and size limitations to use to regulate accessory structures. Their accessory structures cannot exceed 35, I'm sorry, cannot exceed 30% of the principal structure except for two car garages, which two car garages shall not exceed 600 square feet except in the T2R district, which is a rural district. Beaufort County did make an amendment to their accessory structure to allow accessory uses to be connected to the principal structure via roof line, connect and walkway that meets the building code, which then is classified as part of the principal structure rather than an accessory structure. Collin County uses setbacks and building placement to regulate the size of accessory structures. In certain cases, they have increased setbacks, but they do not have any size limitations for accessory structures. Orangeburg County, they use building placement and setbacks to regulate these structures, but they too do not have any limitations on accessory structures. Berkeley County, they use building placement setbacks and building size limitations to regulate accessory structures. They do not allow more than, you can't exceed more than 65% of the principal structure. So on page two of these notes, I just outlined what is being proposed, what you reviewed at the council meeting. So the proposal included in the residential zoning district for lots that are less than a half acre in size, that the total square footage of an accessory structure not be, that it shall be limited in size to either 25% of the total ground floor area of the principal structure or 800 square feet, whichever is greater. Just for your information, in our residential zoning district, a minimum lot size is a half acre. So this would only apply to those properties that are less than a half acre. Those would have been created prior to, to the 2007 ordinance. For lots that are greater than a half acre, the building size would be limited to either 50% of the total ground floor area of the principal structure or 1,000 square feet for a half acre to 0.99 acres, 1,200 square feet for 1.9 to, I'm sorry, I missed a part of that, but that's supposed to be from 1 acre to 1.9 acre. 1,300 square feet for 2 to 2.9 acres, 1,400 square feet for 3 to 3.9 acres, and 1,500 square feet for 4 to 4.9 acres. 5 acres and greater would be 1,600 square feet plus 100 square feet per additional acre over 5 acres, not exceed 3,500 square feet. And then the proposal included for the resource conservation and rural preservation zoning district that the square footage of an accessory unit be limited to either 50% of the total ground floor area of the principal structure or 1 to 1.9 acres would be 1,400 square feet, 1,600 square feet for 2 to 2.9 acres, 1,800 square feet for 3 to 3.9 acres, and then 2,000 square feet for 4 to 4.9 acres, 2,500 square feet for 5 acres, plus 200 square feet per additional acre over to 5 acres. Then I did list a few additional recommendations, which includes maybe to allow accessory structures to be built up to 50% of the principal building size for the lots that are greater than a half acre in size for both residential and rural preservation. So that, instead of saying the total gross floor area, we could, I think we did touch on that, maybe Chairman Arzillo, Councilman Arzillo brought that up at the meeting, or meet the building size limitation, whichever is greater. And then we could, so we would replace the total ground floor area with that principal structure. And we could exempt a bona fide agricultural structure and add a definition to clearly define what is an agricultural structure.
Now, a quick question. What drove these changes back in the day? What, what's the reason for limiting the size of accessory structures?
Um, basically, it's just so that accessory structure isn't out of place. I mean, I'll tell you, we just recently had a request for like a, I don't remember how big exactly, but it was pretty big, 2,500 or 3,000 square foot metal building, and it's on a lot with a, with a single wacko hole. on a lot with a single, with a single wide mobile home, a much older mobile home. So that certainly would be out of place.
But what drives it to be out of place?
So if you have a 3,000 square foot, I don't know if you wanna call it a workshop or a metal building, and you have a, a, a single wide mobile home, that's, that is pretty much out of character and out of place. You would expect on a farmland, maybe to have a, a large...
And I understand that, but again, this is, this is my take, and I'm sorry if I'm hijacking it, but I like Collin County, Orangeburg County, if you meet your setbacks, you build it to the building code. Folks that, that live in, again, the areas that are non HOA, HOAs, they can govern that. Communities have covenants and restrictions, they can govern it. If you wanna build a 5,000 square foot workshop, and you want a 1,000 square foot house, I don't see the issue with that, because more, some people may wanna invest in their workshop more than in their house, because of that's just the way that things are. But again, if you build it to the prevailing codes, you build it, they pull the right permits, they're looking at it the right way, I 100% am on board with that. Like, I personally don't like, this right here just makes everything harder for you all. Like, all we need to personally is whenever folks come in with their application for work to build something, make sure they have the applicable setbacks from sides, rears, fronts, the other structure, and they have the, the designed engineer plans to build X, Y, Z, build them to whatever the code adoption is at the time, to build it. I don't really see an issue with that, because again, rural Americana is a whole lot different than HOA neighborhoods and other things. If you look throughout the county, there's many, many accessory structures that are bigger than the principal structure on the lot. And like I said, I'm, it's just the, the way of life in different places, because 800 square foot workshop or garage, you can't really do a full lot in. Even, but then you take it some, even if you go to agricultural exemptions, you look at it, some people don't have the agricultural things to meet that exception. Like, it's not truly agricultural. But again, I think that, we go back, we go with the way Collin and Orangeburg does it, you meet your setbacks, you meet the, the way that the building is built. And again, the others are driven by covenants, HOAs, other things. Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, there's many, many places throughout the county that stands out. But they don't stand out to me, because that's, to me, that's normal way of life.
And then I would just point out, our residential zoning district, we only have one, so it applies right at the outskirts of town, as well as it does in the rural communities. But like I said at the meeting, y'all are the governing body. I think from the planning perspective, we're not gonna be able to really get the planning commission on board with trying to sell these unlimited structures. We have a lot of issues now with people trying to...
Well, if they're doing the wrong thing, hold them, hold them to the letter of the law. And, and like I said, that's where code enforcement and other things come in. If they're trying to do things, if you build a garage, and that may fall under whatever category it's in, but if somebody tries to upfit it to be something that it's not, y'all brought up like people with apartments or whatever, cease and desist, stop work order, throw it on there, shut it down, we have the ability to enforce that.
Sure, when we know about it, we have two inspectors, so it, you know, we, so we have to take those complaints, and it's just work. But I hear you, and we'll do whatever you would like.
I've got a question. So, we have 22 acres. We have a horse barn, four-car garage, house, and I wanna add a barn, but I also wanna add take a riding arena, and enclose it with just 35,000 square feet, 35,000 square feet? I mean, is that gonna affect me?
You said 35,000 square feet?
Yeah, 'cause the riding arena's 120 by 250, and then we wanna have some upper deck observation areas, but it would be an enclosed riding arena. Right now, it's out in the open, it's, it's a lighted riding arena, but I'd like to make it year-round.
Is it personal or commercial?
No, it's personal.
Personal. So...
How does that affect somebody?
Currently, today, yes, it affects you by our ordinance. But, and we've had one of these built here in the county, but it was, it was allowed for their use. They weren't, they weren't, they didn't permit it as a residential structure, it was permitted, you know, for an arena. Now, you are rural preservation, I don't know if this is adding us, is it gonna be an accessory structure to your property that you have now, or is it separate?
No, it's on our property.
So based on that same methodology that you're using here, you couldn't build what you are saying right now?
Right.
So current, what's currently on the books would be limited.
Well, would I like to write that petition down?
Sure. Well, what we're proposing, so one of the recommendations I was making today is that if it's an exempt bona fide agricultural structure, that it would be exempt from any to the building size.
Well, would be an agricultural structure. I wouldn't deem, I would think.
Yes. I provided a definition that says the agricultural structure would be a non-residential building or facility located on land used for farming, designed for various purposes related to the production and storage of agricultural goods, feed, and equipment. These structures are integral in farming operations, and they include barns, silos, and greenhouses, and we can expand upon that definition.
So if we move forward, it would be my recommendation to go with what Collin and Orangeburg is with, who are we to tell somebody that they can't build a 250 or 3,000, as long as they build it to, they pull the permits, they do it the right way, and things are done, they meet all the setbacks. I don't care if they build a 10,000 square foot barn or workshop, and they've got a 1,000 square foot house. I mean, some people, their priorities are different. And if you look, again, if you go out in some of the rural landscape of the county, this is often what you see. People want to store some of their possessions to where you can lock them up. Open-air barns are one thing, but having them, a red iron kinda building is built to the prevailing codes with all the hurricanes, with everything that's there, and you're protecting your assets, people have different things. I just, I don't see what the issue is with building that, and that would be the way that I move forward, is going that route.
I guess it just went back, and they sent a recommendation.
I'm sorry, grab a side conversation about how we move forward, given this.
Yeah, they're just concerned about the size, so I think with them being the, like the officials, they could make those changes.
And if the concern is people doing what they're not supposed to be doing, that's, that's what we have, inspect, there's law enforcement, code enforcement for. If somebody's doing what they're not supposed to be doing in an approved structure for what it was approved for for that certificate of occupancy, then hold their feet to the fire. We, I fully give you my blessings to do whatever you got to do to do that, but we can't hold other people hostage by not allowing them to, for bigger ones. And like I said, I don't know who those are, that's just my beliefs on that.
Lisa, you, you said it a couple of times, that the planning for, who's not gonna go?
They just feel that there should be size limitations. We, I took this back to them, I presented to them, and they were very clear in their last meeting that there should be size limitations.
So here's the thing, this proposal has come forward to be an ordinance change. If that is withdrawn, we're still stuck with 800 square foot.
That's right.
And you understand the problem I've got. I wanna see this moving forward to get it correct, and I, I don't want this going back and then dying. This is gonna get moved forward.
So as a policy, if they even give us a negative whatever from the planning commission, that's just their recommendation.
That's right.
We can vote to do, as the policymakers here, what we feel, and, and I love our planning commission, I just don't think that they're right on this particular one.
Yes, sir. And so I would say, if that's the will of the council, then we will tee it up for your adoption with those changes made, and I would suggest, just out of kindness, that you, you requested Lisa go back and explain your reasoning to the planning.
Absolutely.
Just to, maybe I was away, when I was away, do we ever look at Partyville or Richland, what they have as accessory?
I didn't, just because they're municipal and not a county, but I think theirs is more restrictive than ours.
They're, they're more restrictive, but in your incorporated areas, you're...
I just wanted, just to add it up. Because what happens is, and maybe this will never happen, but you get running the line, all of a sudden, one way is one way, and one way is another. You know, and they'd say, well, they can do it, why can't I?
And I think that's a point that Ms. Wagner made. We've had some issues with development on the edge of the town original.
Yes.
With certain placement of some mobile homes and things like that. So that may be an issue, but again, that's probably some good discussion for your larger transitional zoning that we talked about.
Correct.
And perhaps we could claim in on some of that, too.
Yeah.
So, what?
That would be my recommendation, and that's just mine. I'm only one person at the council, but I think we should go with exhibit C or D, no side, but go with the setbacks, the, we have setbacks, but there are no size restrictions. Build it in, to fully to the intent of the code that's adopted at the time, and I guess, Lisa, you're gonna talk to the planning commission.
Yeah, and we have building placement, like where it should be in the rear of your mott, in your front yard, you know, so we have building placement and setbacks.
And encourage them to, to watch this meeting on YouTube, because they'll see where I'm coming from as well, and maybe that will, they'll get that, because, but all this does is takes rural Americana and tells them, you're part of an HOA now, and I don't...
But it was already restrictive, and we were trying to make it less restrictive.
Right. But again, I, I think, that's just my thing, I'm, I'm only one person here.
Well, you got two.
So I don't...
I agree with you, so.
Okay.
Start it off.
Absolutely. You know, and, and there could have been some wiggle room here, but it seems like there's two, all the way left, all the way right on it, and in that scenario, I, I certainly agree with everything Joey said, for everything he, what he said and how he said it, much more eloquent than I would have said. Absolutely.
Okay, I guess we go back to the, okay, Martin.
Okay.
Wait, that's...
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
General Discussion.
Can I get you? Yeah, Joe? Yeah. I think we'll talk about this in more depth during this week, and probably do a press release, but I just wanna talk about JAR for the moment, what's happening there, and we've had an agreement with the folks that have been running JAR for the last year and a half, who've done a fantastic job, that have been overwhelmed, and we're right now working with Beaufort County Hilton Head, and to come together with them, and as of this morning, the, we're assessing all the animals to see what dogs are available to be put out immediately that are not harmful to, because we have an overflow situation where we have five dogs coming in a day, and cats on top of that, we're talking about 1,800 animals plus a year, and it's been overwhelming, so there's a lot of things we need to do. But they're gonna help us move some animals out. We're doing an agreement with Beaufort County and Hilton Head Community to help us out. As of August 1st, I believe Hilton Head Community will be helping the county run it, that's gonna be for a short period of time, until there's a date that we come up with where the county can take it over, and with their help, and then in the future, we would build a new facility, because what we have today is just, well, the ground's full of parasites, the building's dilapidated, it's just, it's not a good facility for animals. There's no room. So we'll be talking in the future about doing a new facility and going onto the campus off of 170 with Beaufort and Hilton Head. I believe this was discussed sometime a year, year and a half ago, possibly doing this, but I'd like to see this through and get it done for our community and for the animals. Something we've been working very hard on, and, you know, it's been a lot of hard work between Jasper and Beaufort, Hilton Head, and I appreciate all that they've done for us and are doing for us, and we'll keep everybody updated, and we will, we will do some type of press release this week, I believe, so I just wanna talk about that a little bit. Mr. Chairman, I'm done.
Thank you all for y'all's work moving forward. I know it's been a daunting task all the way around for everybody, but thank y'all for making it happen.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. George Hill.
I know we've got a town hall Wednesday?
No. Thursday, yes, Wednesday. That's right.
6 o'clock.
Yes, we do have a town hall.
Speaking of town halls, I'd like to get some schedule, and I will wait the dog days of summer are over. That way, we're not competing with air conditions in some of the buildings, but that is for the, kind of the open general discussion. We, we see a lot of things right now going on with the school district, which in turn comes back to us at the county level. I know there's gonna be a lot of more press and other things that come out that are forthcoming, but I do think that that's probably gonna be one of my topics whenever we have one of our town halls, is to explain to people that county council and those that fall under those, their role with the schools as well is where we are with there, because people have, again, I've said it before, have a big misconception of what our day-to-day stuff entails with them, and just wanna make sure we have people brought up this beat on that. The other topic is, is I think we touched on looking at, or talking about some of the things we're ticked in the other day in our meeting. I went and read the proposed thing that was development agreements into the town, and in that development agreement, it says that Jasper County agrees to provide fire protection. I don't think that conversation has ever been had there in that, so I know that it's coming to fruition, but I think if any studies or anything that we talk about, that needs to be paid for by the developer and not by the, the county or municipality, whomever. But again, I'm still not in favor of it, just because of the lack of infrastructure there as it pertains to fire services in those areas. So again, I had to, the, a few minutes to be able to read that whole document, which is, was not a great read, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, as we kind of, we're, we're a moving target of a lot of things here, as we've got many, many, many things that we're, we're trying to do, and hopefully that comes out. But hopefully, we're able to hire some, some great folks for some of the positions that we have, to include the airport manager, as well as the deputy county administrator, as things are starting to ramp up into new budget season. to ramp up into new budget season, um, like I said, those are lots of things that we're, we've got, so hopefully, A and D, we've, um, as we move forward with that, we've, we've got some, we've had, have we had a lot of applicants for any of the posted positions, especially the higher-level positions yet?
Uh, I would say it's a healthy amount, and, and some informal inquiries, which I also encourage, and some local professionals that you all know, uh, talk to, so I think it's going very well.
Was that for the airport manager or for?
Austin.
Austin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I think that really, we had this, in the budget, we had it for the fourth quarter for the assistant, and I think that we are, the manager, the airport manager takes part of the salary from the previous person, and I think we have enough money to do it sooner, I'd like to have it sooner than later, so we can give you some help. I mean, it's just...
I appreciate that, we're going to meet after this, I think, aren't we, today?
Excuse me?
You and I are going to meet, and we can go through the, along with the county attorney positions, right?
Right. Uh, I sent an email out to everyone about, we, we had a discussion about the leasing and the Airport Commission joint meeting we won and all that, I need dates, three dates so I can go to the Airport Commission, I sent it out, no one replied, except Gene.
When is the, when is our next scheduled meeting? I thought that was kind of where we were going to tail in with that.
Eighteenth, Monday the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, so, I guess I'm free through eight, eleven through eight fifteen.
When is the airport's next scheduled meeting?
They don't have it yet, do they?
Been doing a number, I failed to admit, I can't remember what it is, I think it's the second Wednesday.
That's kind of what I thought, if, if we want to piggyback off of that, I think that would be a great time unless anybody else is...
What time is our meeting, six o'clock?
Six P.M., yeah.
That gives everybody the time to get here.
They're scheduled for the thirteenth on the calendar.
Thirteenth.
So, you're going to open that to the public ready?
Yeah, it should be, it'd be a, a normal meeting, though it seems just a joint.
Well, there needs to be open conversation, too.
I wouldn't, I don't disagree with that, because there's, airport's a big topic.
Yep, so that'd be the thirteenth?
Yes, sir. For their meeting, that is.
Okay, is everybody good for the thirteenth?
I would be good for the...
I hate to say it, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to let you know, I, I know that I've got something for three days, but I think it's going to be like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so that might be ordered before would be fine, Thursday, thirteenth or Wednesday.
Thirteenth or Wednesday, okay, we'll have to have a joint meeting on the thirteenth. Would you, would you notify them, or do you want me to?
Sure.
And that would be their meeting inviting us to Howard D. Strucker?
Yes, sir, out of an abundance of caution, we'll notice them both ways, maybe a quorum there, uh, but you will not make any decisions there, so we're...
Correct, okay.
Uh, just another thing, uh, this is kind of, uh, something we have to discuss, I suggest, I would like to have a workshop on the end of September, I brought this out in last meeting, or last workshop, clerk of court, auditor, school board, and maybe the school board, coroner and treasurer, have them come before us with their budget. Does everybody want to do that?
Do you want to mention that?
Chairman Kim?
Yes.
I thought maybe if we did that in the early part, early to mid-October, we would have a full quarter of financial statements available, we do it in late September, we won't have, we won't have a full quarter.
So, you want October?
So, I was thinking sometime in, you know, second, second week of October, then it would be a more full quarter picture.
All I'm trying to do is set a date so they can be notified, because this is something unusual.
Right.
That we're going to start.
It's new, right.
Right, new, so I just give them it, and if they have questions, they can inquire about it and all that, so, just notify them in October, give them, to set up a date.
And you want them to make a presentation, so to speak, of their financial statements, or how like?
I'll tell you, it just, uh, between you and, uh, the administrator, just sit down and say, what would we be interested in, in how, you know, where are they at, what are they doing, where, what the problems were, et cetera.
I have some ideas to, to make that screen live for you.
I'm just trying to make sure that the public has, never before has any of these constitutional officers brought before them, them a budget, the school has, but, but it's now, here, it's going to be on, on, uh, JC Media, and everybody can look at it, and have questions probably next time. It'll be just a presentation, no questions, no nothing, just a presentation.
While you're on meetings, I had one, you finally have run out this list, I have another one, I was going for your twenty-fourth meeting here, workshops, um, we had a to-be-determined workshop for August the eleventh, we had a potential topic on there of, uh, reassessment. Ms. Rogers, do you think this?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you think they can be ready for that? Is that still okay with you, that was a ten A.M. standalone workshop on the eleventh? We're trying to get this topic in front of you, because this will be the year that the reassessment is implemented?
Right, what I would like to do, and, uh, I guess talking to the rest of the council in a roundabout way, we've got to shorten some of these meetings, we can't have five hours, six hours of a meeting, so maybe in some of these bigger, uh, items, we can have workshop before the meeting, so we split it up, for example, if it's a PDD or something, just like, uh, the thing we did today with the structures, have that beforehand, so we can at least, don't have to spend three hours, because we're, the way it's working now is our meetings are workshop slash meeting.
You have to ask your questions, Mr. Chairman.
Why? We've stopped that, shorter meetings, shorter meetings, and, and the waste is going back and forth, I mean, me.
I think it's a progression, you had a whole lot of topics that you needed to be updated on, right?
I understand that.
And so we're, we're getting through those, and so now your workshops can become more normalized, and have some items, action, action items.
So, do we have anything on that eighteenth, pre-meeting before that, but do we have a workshop before eighteenth meeting?
I do not have that yet.
No, we don't have that until, when we, when's the agenda meeting?
Later this week.
We have an agenda meeting on August the eighth.
Okay, so, at the eleventh, I'll put down general discussion, and we'll, we can, when I get the meet, we'll have the subjects, and we can go over that.
Very good.
And maybe, even if we have a workshop before, we can fit one in.
Well, the only other big thing, uh, two big things, reassessment, we want to get in front of you, because that's going to be part of your budget going forward, we want to get in front of you a capital improvement plan, uh, Mr. Iwaniki's done some good work, I'm trying to pull some of that together, so we've got to have some key decisions from you about what infrastructure money you want to be spending, uh, as we do this bond issuance, and there was a third thing, I lost track of it then. And the fire management, we have to have Mr. Lawrence want to come back and explain that reallocation of millage, because all those things are going to collide in your next budget.
And, and on those meetings, could you inquire to these people that are going to be present, that they give us the information beforehand?
Yes, sir.
So we can look at it, I'm just trying to shorten some of this stuff, because you're giving us information.
Right.
But we don't...
I realize it's a lot, but again, you're new, and that will, that will, will start to get better.
And also with that CIP, um, with the road tax component, can you, can y'all touch on that, because I have a lot of folks reach out to me on the, the vehicle road tax, that they pay on the vehicle every year.
Right.
Um, one, some say it's not legal, two, it's, uh, I think we just need to look at that, um, to make sure we're doing right by that collection that we're doing.
I think that was, it was illegal, maybe illegal.
Or they, they, they changed the statute and...
The states changed that.
What's older is new again.
Right, so, anyway, uh, is there anything else? Uh, yes, there is, just to let you know that we will be, I think we'll be holding a meeting in August sometime with the transportation tax, correct? Will that be ready available? Somebody?
You probably have the date on the tip of your tongue, don't you, Chairman?
No, I'm just saying, it's going to be sometime in August, that's all, I don't, I'm not going for dates, but...
We have it down, it's Friday, August the twenty-second, is what I have on my phone, at ten A.M., so I think that's with the advisory committee to really review that information with, uh, Mr. Iwaniki, and then probably, after that, it'd be a good time to present it to the full...
They're going to put that, I think they're going to put that out to the group, the advisory group?
Yes, yeah, we, we heard loud and clear you wanted a reminder about a weekend, so that, that information.
Okay. And that's going to be in Hartleyville?
They're using this as a challenge.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, it's supposed to be, I don't know if that's set up yet, Ms. Tisha Waves, I think is working on that.
On a Friday?
Yes.
We do need to be careful when we're setting dates in here, because my calendar there may not reflect what's open in here, because we're using it for court, we're using it for all the additional meetings for, for everybody, and some of these dates need to be checked before it's out of the stone.
Very good point, I think the only one that's sort of up in the air, uh, right now, while there would be that, uh, August the eleventh, I don't know if you have any conflicts for that, the one we just talked about for reassessment, so we can do that.
Or maybe put that one before the eighteenth meeting, or they...
Possible, sure.
August the eleventh, that's the workshop for ten A.M.?
Yes, ma'am.
I've already put that one.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And would you check with Hartleyville for the twenty-second?
Okay.
Ten o'clock.
Twenty-second of the Friday?
But that's just for y'all's committee.
That's really, that's, I'm just trying to bring it out there, that's all, if anybody wants to show up, they can show up.
Okay.
Just some time for us to forsake the adjournment.
Perfect timing.
Is there anything else for the good of the council? I just want to thank Wanda for what she does, because when she's gone, I feel lost, so I want to appreciate, give my appreciation to her, to the hard work that she does. Mr. Rosella?
Mr. Rosella, I'll make that motion whenever you ready.
Mr.?
I'll second that motion, same as you make it.
I just want to say thank you to, uh, Councilman Dan Deason, uh, for his duty and work on the animals of Jasper County, it's rough, it's rough when you go there and see them, so, anyway, thank you very much, like to have a motion to adjourn.
Make this motion.
Second?
Second.
All of us in favor? Say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.